Wow, what a great crowd. Thank you all for coming out tonight to this town hall, special town hall meeting with Senator Bernie Sanders and German Ambassador Peter Widdig. Just want to say a couple of quick housekeeping things before we begin. Our host, the Unitarian Universalist Society asks that there be no food or drinks in the sanctuary with the exception of bottled water. Please, no signs. That's against the church rules, and we ask that you kindly respect them. The bathrooms, if you need them, are through the door to the right. There is an accessible bathroom through this door here. After the senator and the ambassador speak, we're going to open it up for discussion. We hope to have a lively discussion. Please, you can come up to two mics here. We ask you to line up. If you can, please avoid long statements. We're here to discuss Germany. We have a very special guest, and we ask that you be respectful of that. And if you are in the balcony, unfortunately, we don't have a mic up there, so you will have to come down to ask a question. With that, now it's my pleasure to introduce German Ambassador to the United States, Peter Widdig, and someone who needs no introduction, our U.S. Senator Bernie Sanders.
Thank you. What a wonderful turnout. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. And let me tell you what the purpose of the meeting is. I think that as a nation, we really don't know all that much about what's going on around the rest of the world. And I think the media does a pretty bad job at that. So what we have here tonight is we have Peter Widdig, and we have been working this—be nice to this guy—we've been working him hard all day long. As some of you may know, among many other things, one of the areas that Germany is very well-known for is their apprenticeship programs. And I have had long concerns that many of our young people who are not going to go to college don't get the kind of training that they need to get the decent-paying jobs that are out there. And Germany has done a pretty good job in that regard. And Peter today met with the governor and with members of the legislature, and then we were in Barry, going to a technical center there to just kind of compare notes and see what we're doing here in Vermont, what they're doing in Germany, and how we can improve what we're doing. Tonight, after Peter makes his opening remark, what we'll do is we'll just chat a little bit. And I mostly—we'll go anyplace where people want to go with the questions—I want to focus on social policy in Germany, in the sense that I think many Americans are not aware of the kind of paid family leave programs that exist in Germany, not aware of the kind of childcare programs that exist, retirement programs, the healthcare programs, the fact that public colleges and universities in Germany are tuition-free. All right, without further to do, let me introduce Peter Widdig. Peter has been a German Ambassador to the United States since April 2014, and prior to this, he was German Ambassador to the United Nations in New York. Peter, thanks so much for being with us.
Thank you, Senator Sanders, not only for the kind words, but also for this invitation to come out here to this beautiful state of Vermont. I had been here before with my family skiing, but this is now my first official visit to Burlington. I'm wearing the Green Mountain pin here, and it's just great to be here. This morning, when I flew out from Washington, D.C., I was facing one challenge by my daughter. She's nine-year-old. She said, "I have to bring back a pint of Chunky Monkey from Ben &amp; Jerry's Farm. Now I have to figure out how to take this on a plane in a solid form." I want to talk a little about Germany, my country. Washington has had a shutdown issue. My country had a coalition-building issue in the last month. It took four months after the last election to form a coalition government. But in the past two days, we've come around, and we will have most probably now, a government. So that sounds pretty complicated, and indeed it is, because we have a parliamentary system as opposed to a presidential system, which is binary. And in a parliamentary system, we have many parties. We have six parties, and in order to form a government, we need a coalition. But the second reason is that our mainstream parties, center-right and center-left, have been weakened in the last election. And that's a trend in Europe. We have a fragmentation of the party landscape, and we have now seen, unfortunately, I would say, the emergence of a right-wing populism in Europe and also in my own country. That party got 12.6% and is now sitting in the opposition ranks and makes the whole political life a little bit more difficult. The strengthening of populism in Europe is a challenge for our democracy that we've got to live with, I guess, in the coming years, and we've got to tackle that, and basically by looking at the concerns of the people that are behind the rise of populism. Now, we have also a good news with this new formation of the government, and that is that the country as such is doing pretty well. And even with this delay, the country is functioning. And number one, we have not a change of the whole administration once there's a new election. We have a sort of a permanent civil service. I'm a non-political civil servant. I'm not a political appointee. So we, civil servants, keep the shop running, even if there is a new government. In Washington, I think some 4,000 people with a new president have to come in for the new job. We don't have that, so there is continuity. And the second thing is, we are a federal country, so a lot of the issues that matter to the citizen are the authority of the federal states, education, taxation, and this is where they belong, where the problem has to be solved. And this sort of strong federalist element also guarantees the stability of the country, even if the government changes or has a problem in forming a coalition. And another important, I think, piece of good news for our country and beyond is that we now have a chance to reform the European Union. We have an experienced chancellor, Merkel, who's been in power for 12 years, and we have a new French president, President Macron, a young person with a lot of dynamic and a vision. And I think the two leaders will be able to accomplish the necessary reform that Europe needs, especially after Brexit, the U.K. leaving the European Union. Sometimes in the U.S., the European Union is perceived as sort of an economic club that is sometimes not performing so well in the American perception. Few people realize that the European Union for us is a peace project. It is a family of nations that guarantee that we will never have war or an armed conflict in our continent, a continent that had been ridden by wars and conflicts over centuries. And now we have been living for more than 70 years in peace. It's unconceivable that France and Germany will ever go to war again, and this is thanks to the European Union. So we cannot emphasize enough how important the European Union, as complicated as it may be in terms of political architecture, how important that European Union is for our stability, for our peace, and for our prosperity. And I think we have a chance now to move Europe really forward. We and this new government will be committed to NATO and to the transatlantic alliance. The U.S. is by far our most important ally outside Europe, and we are vigorously loyal to that relationship. We also remain committed to other big goals, like fighting climate change and strengthening the Paris Agreement. That is— I think that is something I can say about our political culture. We are a very ecologically-minded country. We have a Green Party. But in the last decades, you know, ecologically-friendly thinking and action has penetrated the whole society. We are committed to write quite ambitious climate goals by 2050, a couple of years to go. Carbon emissions should be reduced by 80 to 95% relative to the baseline of 1990. So that is basically an ambitious goal to decarbonize our economy over the next decades, and we are firmly committed to that goal. Now, we will also—the government—invest more in education, in research, and in the digital economy, where we have some homework to do in bringing broadband to all of the country. So there is a need to invest there. Another issue that has rattled our society in the past is the issue of refugees and immigration. You might know that as a result of the civil war in Syria, we have received close to a million refugees within a very short period of time in 2015, 2016. So most of them came from Syria, 15% from Iraq, 15% from Afghanistan. And that was a huge challenge. That really stretched our organizational capacities, but is much more than just organization providing food and shelter. But it's also a challenge of integration. And integration is not done in a week or so. It's almost a generational task. And it is a challenge for the society. In our case, most of the refugees are coming from Muslim countries. That adds a cultural dimension to that immigration—to that integration task. So that will absorb a lot of financial resources and also efforts by the society. It has upended, to a certain extent, our political landscape. I mentioned the Right-Wing Populist Party. It's basically an anti-immigration party. But it has also had beneficial effects. We're an aging society. We need immigration, and many of those people, of those refugees that are coming, are young people. And you mentioned, Senator, our issue, our signature program of apprenticeship system. This is something we can also offer to some of the better-educated refugees. And this is a pathway for them into our labor market. Now, I close here and say, our relationship to the U.S. is a very special one. I would say, German democracy wouldn't exist in that form without the United States. The United States helped us after the Second World War to become a thriving democracy. It integrated Germany into the NATO. It helped us to establish a European Union. The United States was instrumental in helping us reunifying the country after the fall of the war. It was a great vision that the people and, at that time, the administration saw that, you know, the will of the people, a peaceful revolution can never be stopped. And they helped us to manage that unification when other neighbors of ours were deeply skeptical what would come out. The U.S. stood beside us, and we will never forget that. So that relationship is crucial for us, although we have some challenges now. We have some differences of opinion, like, you know, climate policy. But we will work for that relationship to continue. And we want to, together with the U.S., try our best to maintain this open, liberal, international order that served us so well in the past and that guaranteed our prosperity and stability, and that is really under stress by a lot of powers in the world. So this is one of my passions, do my little part in keeping the relationship with the U.S. as close as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ambassador. What I want to do is to ask you to kind of describe for us what life in Germany is for an average family. And let me begin. We'll start with the birthing process. If I am a woman in Germany and I have a baby, what type of maternity leave is available to me? How does that work?
There is maternity leave, six weeks before birth, and eight weeks after birth, I believe.
And that is paid?
That is paid.
And my understanding is that after the mother goes back to work or takes family leave for up to three years, she can receive 60% of her pay doing that. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that's correct. But also, fathers are eligible. If, for instance— if the couple decides that the woman should go back to work and the father stay home to look after the child, then parental support also can be given to the family via the father staying home.
Now, the United States has the rather dubious distinction of being the only major country on earth not to provide paid family leave. What kind of system do you have in
Beyond that, what we just described, well, we have maternal leave, parental leave, and then we have a system of free early child education from one year onwards. So every child has a right to be schooled in a pre-K school.
Anybody know what childcare costs in Burlington a year? Anyone have a guess? What's it cost?
I wanted to ask you—
Well, I'll get to the questions later. I just want to stay on childcare for a second. It's about $12,000 a year, I think. Does that sound right in the ballpark? All right, and you got free childcare after one year? Okay. Talk about—all parents receive a benefit from around $250 per month to help defray the cost of raising children up until the age of 18. What is the purpose of that?
Well, everybody gets sort of a child benefit.
He goes like this. He says, "Well, of course, everybody gets a child benefit."
Yeah.
Well, most of us don't, but—
So I have four children. I get about 800 euros, which is about, I guess, $900 a month for my—although I wouldn't really need it, although I'm not, you know, a 1% person.
[laughing]
But even I get that. Every person gets that.
Now, here's something that is really interesting, and that is the issue of paid vacation, vacation in general. As I think many of you know, in the United States, there are jobs being advertised that have zero vacation time, zero. Or maybe people get a week off or they get two weeks off. But we are, maybe with the exception of Japan, the hottest-working people in the world. And it's really taking a toll on us in terms of stress and the ability to relate to our families. Mr. Ambassador, what kind of vacation time do people in Germany have?
I think the legal—they are entitled to 20 days, everybody, and then it goes up with age. And I think my sort of account is 30 days a year, plus all the holidays.
All right. You discussed living in a nation where childcare is virtually free after one year of age. What happens when kids go to college? Talk about the nature of your college education for a moment.
Yeah, this is something I guess we are proud of. We have a tuition-free college system. 95% of our universities are public. So they are basically free. There's a fee that amounts up to $250 per semester. That's sort of an administrative fee, but there's no really—there's no—
You notice the laughter here. People think that that is not an onerous burden for going to college.
It's not even a textbook.
Yeah. Universities are financed entirely by the state. It's taxpayers' money. And on top of that, we have support for children from low-income families to cover their cost of lives. You know, that is—I think, part of a philosophy in our tradition, we feel that education is a common good that should be financed out of the budget of the state. And of course, it's a service for the citizens, but in a way, I guess, for a society, it really does pay off to have well-qualified citizens and broad access to higher education. And I think it has contributed to making us a highly industrialized, mature economy. So I think it is, of course, a service to the citizens, but it is good for the whole Commonwealth.
Say a word about healthcare. Now, as you probably know, and everybody in the room knows, the United States is the only major country on earth not to guarantee healthcare to all people. You have a somewhat different system than other European countries have. Say a word about your system. Is everybody covered?
Yeah, we have a mandatory health insurance, and it goes back to the 19th century. And here again, I think we have a little bit of a philosophical mindset difference. We come from different traditions. We had a rather enlightened chancellor in the 19th century called Bismarck. He was a conservative, you know, member of the landed aristocracy. But I think he had a sense of, you know, social responsibility, but he also wanted to keep the socialists down. So what he—basically established an insurance, a universal health insurance and a universal unemployment insurance, you know, out of the coffers of the state. And ever since that, we have established this kind of principles of solidarity and redistribution of wealth via the insurance, health insurance, and unemployment insurance. So that debate that America has or had about health insurance, we never had, really, because—
You don't think it's a good idea to throw tens of millions of people off of health insurance?
Well, I think, you know, I can—
Just out of curiosity, let me ask you this. If somebody in parliament jumps up and says, "I think it's a good idea to throw tens of millions of people off of the healthcare they had," how would the rest of the country react to that?
Yeah, it would be unconceivable in our country. But I know— But I also have to add, this country has a different tradition of individualism. And I have a friend in New York who would probably say, you know, "It all depends on life choices. If you choose not to be insured, it's your choice." And, you know, I think we are coming from a different mindset, and there is an individualist tradition in this country, and it leads to—
I'm not so sure that that's the answer. I think it has—but the point here—
Just try to understand.
I think that it's true not only for Germany. I mean, I think throughout Europe, the most conservative of the political parties would not think for one moment that healthcare should not be available to all people as a right. Is that broadly correct?
I think you're right, yeah.
All right, tell me—stay on healthcare for a moment. All right. Mom has a baby, goes to the hospital, has her baby. How much does that cost?
I wouldn't know. My wife will probably remember. Honestly, I don't. I don't know.
In general, is there much—do you have to pay much out-of-pocket when you go into the doctor?
No. We have an insurance—it's a sort of double-headed insurance. 86% of Germans are insured in public—via public insurance, publicly-financed insurance companies. They can choose among various, but they're all publicly financed. And then the rest, 14%, chose a private insurance, which does not give you much of a difference in treatment, but it is—you pay more, and in some cases, in hospitals, et cetera, you have— And in some cases, in hospitals, et cetera, you have more choices. But basically, it's a publicly-financed healthcare for all.
You have described a pretty generous social welfare system, which obviously costs substantial sums of money, which takes us to the issue of taxation. Tell us a little bit about the nature of your tax system.
Well, we have federal and state and local taxes as well. Our, I think, tax, the range starts from 14% and the highest is around 48% taxation. We have a tax rate that is higher. I think 36% is the tax rate. The US is something in the 20s, 29 or something. So we have higher taxes in our country. I know most people don't like taxes, especially Americans don't like tax. I mean, all this welfare state has to be financed, and in our case, it's financed by tax. And the tax rate in general is higher than in the US.
But you get a lot for those tax dollars, yes?
I think we get a lot. And I think, I would also claim that our health system has worked well. We spend about 9% of the GDP on health. In this country, if I'm not mistaken, it's the double. It's almost 18%.
Spend about double per capita, you know. There's an issue that in this state, people feel strongly about, and that is the issue of the environment and climate change. And I know you said a few words about that during your remarks. Can you talk a little bit about the nature of the transition of your energy system away from fossil fuel? Of what you're doing and where you hope to go?
Yeah, that is a very important development. We don't have, unfortunately, we are not blessed by nature like the US. We don't have any substantive resources, natural resources, in terms of gas and oil. So we have to import our gas and oil. We used to rely a lot on nuclear energy. We decided, and it was a broad-based support for that decision in the society, to phase out nuclear energy. It will be phased out by 2022. We won't have nuclear energy anymore. It is a challenge because nuclear energy is clean. So we will have to make up for that if we want to reach our emission goals. We are betting on renewables. And that has become, I guess, an asset also in creating new jobs. Over the last years, the renewable industry, renewable energy industry created 350,000 jobs. So that has become an asset for our economy. And today, renewables cover one-third of our electricity consumption. And it is supposed to go up because we want to phase out coal as well. We can't do it as quickly as we would like because our energy mix is still dependent on coal. We import gas. We import gas from Russia. We import gas from Norway and from other countries like Algeria. And we will have to diversify our import of oil and gas. But our main focus is to broaden and deepen the renewable energy sector.
Germany has been putting a lot of emphasis on solar. So if I own a home and I want to put solar panels, how does that work? Do I get a subsidy from the government or...?
Well, you get a tax break. And then you, those people who, for instance, operate windmills, they have a guarantee for, they get a guaranteed revenue. And in a way, that revenue is subsidized also by the government. So we, this renewable energy focus doesn't come cheaply. It is also financed basically by higher taxes.
But does that have widespread support throughout the country?
Yeah, mainstream, widespread support by center-left, center-right, and of course, the Green Party.
We have seen getting off domestic policy, we have seen the rise of a right-wing party in Germany that got over 12% of the vote, double, I think, what they got last election. Can you say a little bit about the causation of that? Why are people voting for a right-wing extremist party in Germany?
Yeah, it is a fallout of this refugee and immigration wave that hit us in a volume and a speed that was unprecedented. It was the biggest movement of people from the Middle East to Europe since the Second World War. We had not seen anything like that since the Second World War. So it was really a momentous event. And this party originally was a small fringe party that was opposed to the euro, the common currency of the European Union. And they said, "We are better off with our old currency, the Deutschmark." They wanted the Deutschmark back. It was sort of a party of some outlier economists. But that morphed into an anti-immigration party with that refugee crisis. So it is now almost a single-issue party focused on anti-immigration. And it has galvanized certain other factors or currents on the right wing. I would not say it's not a neo-Nazi party. It's, there are some conservatives, some really right-wing populists, and it's sort of an assembly also of protest voters. But it is, we've got to take it seriously, 12%. That's sizable. I assume this right-wing populism will be with us for some time. I also think that this is a serious challenge to our liberal democratic order in Europe. I would even go so far to say the Western democracies are being challenged by right-wing populism. And I think we've got to deal with the issues that are underlying.
You mentioned, if I heard you correctly, that there have been a million refugees coming in in the last several years. Is that correct?
No, we had a million within a couple of months.
Couple of months?
Yeah, from September 2015 to March 2016. We had, sometimes we had 10,000 a day coming in. And that was just overwhelming.
So these are people who probably cannot speak German. Many of them will be of a different religion, yeah?
Yeah.
How are you, and that's just an incredible number of people coming in in a very short period of time. What are you trying to do to integrate them into German society?
Well, two things are of primordial importance. Get them in the labor market as soon as possible. And then train them in German. Give them, offer them language courses. And one is related to the other. So what we did is, we offered, I think, around 500,000 last year, or in 2016, we offered 500,000 immigrants and refugees a language course. We employed, I think, 35,000 additional teachers to teach them in German so that they have a rudimentary command of the language in order to get them into the labor market. So that's the pathway. And I think 20% of all businesses are now employing refugees. Of course, the government appealed to them. And we have success stories. And we also have stories where there's no success. And it is, in a way, a divisive issue because some people in our country believe that it will be almost next to impossible to integrate all of them coming from a very different culture. So it is a real issue fueling this kind of anti-immigration party. And it will probably take a couple of years to digest that. But I also have to say, this is a signature of the time. There are 65 million people in the world on the move. Europe is in the neighborhood of North Africa and the Middle East. The Middle East is in flames. North Africa is full of fragile states. So that is something that we've got to deal with. And most people in Europe, and also in Germany, are determined now to say, "We can't take anymore, and we have to make our borders more resilient, and we've got to do more repatriation of those who are not really refugees in the sense of victims of war or persecution, but just economic migrants." And I think they have a point. We cannot offer a job to anybody who wants to live in our country. But we have to focus on those who are really fleeing a war, a civil war, or have humanitarian reasons to come. And that's something, I think, that also politicians have to take seriously. The triage, the separation of those who have a real need to be protected and those who are understandably, but not legitimately, try to get a job. And we can't give jobs to anybody.
All right, my last question, we can open it up, is the role of trade unions in Germany. Trade unions are much more powerful, and a much higher percentage of workers belong to unions. And you also have a situation, which I think is really interesting. In large corporations at least, you have workers councils. Workers have representation on basic decision-making. Can you say a word about that?
Well, we have mandatory workers council. That's by law. And then we have another concept that's called the co-determination. The big companies, representatives of workers, mostly unions, but it could also be independent representative of workers, have to sit in the boards of, half of them are sitting in the boards of big companies. So that's the concept of...
What do you mean, half of them? Half of the boarders?
Yeah.
Half of the boards of large corporations are workers?
Yeah. Well, you have to understand, that's the tradition. And that's, I think, also a result of the war, Second World War. Wars are always the biggest equalizers. And the idea was to create a socially responsible market economy. And that was the idea of the founding fathers and mothers of our republic after the Second World War. We didn't just want to have sort of capitalism pure, but we wanted to have a social, responsible capitalism. And this concept, to have a participation of workers in the businesses and a co, we call it co-determination, in the boards of the big companies, that is a result of that philosophy.
So representatives of workers will be involved in all major decision-making of major corporations?
Well, they are in the boards. They are not sort of in the management of the companies, but they are in the boards overseeing the management. And mostly, it's union representatives. But not, it doesn't have to be so. But because those union representatives are full-time board members, they have to sort of, you know, devoting all their time to board affairs. So that's, I think, I guess, it's pretty unique. But this is part of the tradition in Germany.
Okay. Mr. Ambassador, thank you very much. Now, let's open it up. We got a mic here, we have a mic here. If you can make your questions brief, that would be much appreciated.
My name is Madeline Winterfalcon. I live in Moncton. And I want to make a short, very short statement about health insurance. I am now on Social Security, yeah, okay, Social Security and Medicare. And I worked for almost 50 years in a middle-class office position with good insurance and decent salary. And now, as I'm aging, things are getting really bad. My partner works part-time, and I work also very part-time. And we make just about this much, too much money to get any assistance with particularly our prescriptions. I just found out the other day that the copay on my insulin is now $45 a vial, a vial. It used to be $9 for a three-month supply. And all of a sudden, this has changed. And I don't know how I'm going to pay for it. And I never thought that I would be in this position, that things are getting way more expensive as I'm having less and less income. So it's just something I wanted to put out there.
Let me say this to you and to anybody else who has similar problems. I don't know what my office can do, but please give us a ring.
Okay, I'll do that.
There may be programs out there that we can help you with.
Okay.
But let me just say this, taking that question. Everybody hear the question about the high price of insulin and the problems with healthcare? Talk a little bit about prescription drugs. Do you have familiarity with the issue? In Germany, the very same medicine that we buy in this country is far, far less expensive. Why is that, do you think?
I'm not so sure whether I can answer that question. It's probably a different kind of regulation. And probably, we have a corridor of pricing of medicine.
Well, we remain, I mean, we have the totally absurd situation that right now, and insulin is a perfect example. And I think the guy, is that an Eli Lilly product that you get?
Yes, it is.
Well, you'd be happy to know, and I say this painfully, that that particular fellow who raised the price of insulin is now the Secretary of Health and Human Services.
I know that.
And right now, in this country, unbelievably, and again, this is something that I think in Europe, people could not believe, the drug companies can raise their prices for any reason, to any level, that they can. And they will, and that's what they do. And we end up paying probably twice as much for the same exact drugs as are sold in Germany or in Canada or in France. And this is a major, major, major issue. You know, we're working night and day in a variety of ways. Because this, in the midst of a dysfunctional healthcare system, the high cost of the prescription drugs is just an outrage. And so many people just cannot afford the medicine they desperately need. But thank you very much for coming up. Thank you.
Welcome in. My name is Diane Miller. My name's Diane Miller, and some of my relatives come from the area of Dorn, Germany. And I was wondering, since we started off talking about cooperating, I've been trying to find out about what community is like there. And I was wondering if you could give a really brief, like, two-sentence explanation of what these collective municipalities are that are in that area? If you could.
The collective municipalities?
Yeah, we don't have that here, I don't think.
Can you give me an example?
Well, like Gilenfeld and Eckfeld and Laufeld and all these things, they're all part of this collective arrangement together where these little tiny villages all band together... this collective arrangement together where these little tiny villages all band together to, for their welfare and for their governance, I guess. But that's all I know from this far away. And I'm wondering if you know any more about it. That's all.
I fear I don't know much about that. That is sort of municipal affairs. I've been away for eight years. Sorry.
Okay. Ma'am?
I like that question. I'm going to read it from here, because I typed a thingy. So I feel like the burden of assimilation being placed completely on refugees is a little bit unfair, seeing as they've just been displaced from their homes. I was curious as to if there are any educational or job retraining efforts that are geared towards German citizens to kind of get them more familiar with the culture of all of these individuals coming in, since so many of them seem to be coming from the same area? Or if there are also, like, educational things reminding them of the fact that your population is declining and immigration is important in Germany?
What was the question?
I think the question-- No, it's a good question. And the question is, assimilation, and what is Germany doing to make refugees integrated culturally and work-wise?
Yeah. Kind of. It was like, what is, what is Germany doing, not specifically with those refugee populations? Because I understand you have, like, job retraining and language courses for them, but like, for German people--
For the German people?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So what kind of educational efforts take place with the German population to allow them to better understand the nature of the refugees and make them feel more welcome?
Well, I guess it comes with a problem. You know, if you have, all of a sudden, in a school in Berlin, 40% kids that are kids are refugees, the other kids, the 60% Germans, they will be wanting to know where are they coming from? What is their religion? What makes them come here? Which kind of war did they flee? And I think then the teachers are called upon to explain that to them. I mean, there are no sort of education programs world, you know, nationwide. What is Syria? And what is Islam? But I think it comes with a problem. And we have a huge discussion now about, is there a need for a kind of European Islam? A kind of sort of moderate Islam that is compatible with our values, with, let's say, the gender values that we have, the respect for women, et cetera, the veils? That all is now an issue. And I think, so it was, it is a kind of education with a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name's Robin Lloyd, and thank you, Ambassador, for coming here. I know you have a robust peace movement in your country, both against nuclear power and, and I understand, in some cases, you're asking our bases to leave. And so I want you to know, we have a peace movement here, and we're very concerned about the F-35 airplanes at our airport, which is, which are unfortunately supported by all of our political elite here. Could you say what the attitude of Germany is to these bombers? Are you buying a bunch of them? And if so, what for?
No, I can't comment on that. I really don't know enough about this. I can only tell you, yes, there is a peace movement in Germany, and that has had a long But I think most people believe that we are living in a world that is under stress, that is, in our neighborhood, in disarray. We have challenges emanating from Russia. And so there is a need of defense. I think that is mainstream position. And we need to beef up our defense. If we, for instance, look at the challenges from the Middle East, those countries that are hit by terrorism, those are legitimate issues. And I respect the peace movement in our country. But at the same time, I think most citizens would say, this is not the time to relax on defense. But the world has become a more dangerous world, and defense, and defense spending is something legitimate. That is what probably most citizens would say.
Sure.
It's a question for both of you to answer separately. Peter, is Germany now on track? And Bernie, is America on track to possibly diminish or even lose your respective and our respective systems of representative democracy? And Peter, Germany lost its democracy back in the late '20s and early '30s. And could you spell out the kind of things that happened to cause that to be lost? And Bernie and Peter, could you both speak to your, not the things that need to happen to preserve it, but the plans to actually let us fix these things to avoid that result?
Thank you for that question. I am not worried about representative democracy being abolished or substituted by an authoritarian rule. I don't see that emanating. But we are, in a way, faced with a situation where populism, mostly from the right, is disturbing the political consensus and is resorting to methods that poison our civilized political discussion. I'm not, we are not at a stage where we should fear sort of authoritarian leaders, and speaking here, Europe, authoritarian leaders emerging. This is not the '20s or the '30s. On the other hand, we should not be complacent. Democracy has to be defended every day. The right of the press has to be defended. The right of the opposition to speak out. And nobody should be bullied. The institutions that provide the checks and balances have to be respected, et cetera. And I'm not pessimistic that we cannot defend our democracy. But there are challenges from populism in our continent. And I think the only way to sustainably weather this storm is identify the issues that people are moved by and what attracts them to populism. And those are sometimes social issues, social grievances. Sometimes they're economic grievances. Sometimes there are identity grievances. And it's different in different countries.
You ask a, where'd you go? You asked a very important question. And especially with Trump in the White House, I am very, very worried about the drift toward authoritarianism. When you have a president, I don't mean to be overly political here, I think you all know my views on it. But when you have a president, I mean, it's one thing to have a conservative, and I, you know, we disagree very strongly, but you have a president who's a pathological liar. And I say that not just-- And I say that not just, you know, as a political statement, it undermines democracy if you have a president who increasingly, people can't believe a word that he says. He is intentionally lying. And there is a reason for that. And you have a president, whenever anybody in the media criticizes him, says, "That's all fake news. It's all a lie." And you have a president who attacks, you know, people, presidents always disagree with decisions coming from the judiciary. And they may appeal them, but you don't attack the independence of the judiciary, you know, an independent branch of government. You got a-- You know, you got a president who, just the other day, I mean, it gets, it never ends, you know, suggests that people like me, who were at the State of the Union speech, who did not think every word that he says was brilliant and deserved a standing ovation, we are being attacked as treasonous, treasonous. That's heavy-duty word. And if you go deeper than that, you find that for a lot of reasons, and, you know, Peter discussed some of them, a lot of people do not have a lot of respect or faith for democracy. You have elections where half the people don't vote. You have a political system today where the Koch brothers, in this coming election, will spend $400 million to elect right-wing extremists. So what I am spending a lot of my time on is what we call revitalizing American democracy in every way that we can, getting people to stand up, to fight back, to run for office. And we're having success at that all over this country. A lot of young people now, for the first time, are getting involved in politics and running for office. But I share that concern. I don't think that the fabric of democracy in this country is as strong as I would like to see it. On my office, we have a painting, who was that guy from Arlington? Who was the painter?
Norman Rockwell.
Who? Norman Rockwell. And I have the painting of that scene. It was a town meeting in Arlington, Vermont. You remember that? A guy was up speaking at a town meeting. And I believe in that. I worry about that very much. So I would say at the, to me, where we are right now, there are two key issues that I worry about. Number one, oligarchy. And the fact that we have fewer and fewer people controlling the economic and political life of the country. And number two, not unrelated, is this drift toward authoritarianism. You have the president just the other day saying, "My goodness, wouldn't it be wonderful that we spent tens and tens of millions of dollars on a military parade?" So he could stand up there like they did in the old Soviet Union. Well, I don't know what they did, you know, it is, you know, really quite unthinkable. So I would say that I am less concerned about your political views than I am about the need to revitalize democracy, get people involved in the process, defend democracy. You remember what Abraham Lincoln said? "A government of the people, by the people, and for the people." And man, we have to fight hard to preserve that.
My name is Bob Roberts. I'm from St. Albans Bay. And I've been here probably about 15 or so years. But I taught college in Michigan for many years. And there was a program there where the German Bundestag and the U.S. Congress brought young factory workers, and they were in our college for one year. And then we sent some of our young factory workers. Is that program still going on?
Yeah, it's, thank you for that question. Supremely successful program. It's one of the best programs we have in exchange. And there was a danger at a certain point in time that the funds for that program would be cut. But both Congress and the German Bundestag fought hard, and in the end, that decision was reversed. I cannot emphasize enough how important those people-to-person exchanges are. I mean, so many German young kids have spent a year in an American high school, and less Americans have spent time in Europe. But, you know, whoever has spent time here as a young man or a young woman will never be the same. And we will all be enthusiastic for a great relationship with each other. So I'm a great fan of those programs.
Our last student that we had was Lutz, and he came from East Germany. Wasn't speaking English when he came. And in the year that he was there, he transformed, and he was a wonderful person to see.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, let me-- I don't know, I don't know that we're going to be able to get to everybody online, but that's, those should be the last people online. Okay? No. Okay. Ma'am?
Hi. I admire both of you greatly, and I absolutely love the country of Germany. I think American citizens are feeling increasingly helpless and hopeless in the ability to enact political change. So my question is, what do you recommend citizens do to provide progress to some of the social policies we mentioned, especially in the face of our current administration?
Who's that question addressed?
That's a question--
Both of you.
Senator Sanders.
Yeah.
Look, these are unprecedented times in American history. And we have to act and react in an unprecedented way. So I spend half of my life, right now, doing everything that I can to get people to stand up and to fight back. I think we got to do two things. Number one, we have to take Trump on every day in terms of his racism and his sexism and his homophobia. But that's not enough. The other thing that we have got to do is have a progressive vision that has the American people ask, "Why?" Now, the truth is, Germany is not the most progressive country in the world. What Germany is doing, virtually every other country, more or less, in terms of your social programs, does the same. More or less. Yes? No? All right, maybe not. I mean, Denmark, for example, would go further in many of these programs than Germany, I suspect. Yeah? I'm getting a reluctant yes there. All right. But the reason, you know, that we do things like bring Peter here, is in Germany, everything that he said, of course, everybody is entitled to healthcare as a right. Of course, when you have a baby, you have the right to stay home and nurture. Of course, the husband has a right. Of course, you have the right to go to college tuition-free. All of those things throughout many countries in the world is, of course. How can anyone debate that? But for a variety of reasons in this country, having a lot to do with corporate control over the media, having a lot to do with, you know, two fairly, well, you know, one right-wing party and one moderate party, these issues are not being brought up in America. So one of the things we have got to do is ask simple questions. How does it happen in our very great country? We're the only major country on earth that doesn't guarantee healthcare to all people. What Peter was talking about is not particularly radical. 50 miles away from us in Canada, they got healthcare. We spend twice as much for prescription drugs as they do in Germany. Why? Because they regulate the price. Not a radical idea. 80% of the American people support that. Overwhelming support for making public colleges and universities tuition-free. But you got a political system which is corrupt, which is dominated. Can you imagine, and maybe, Peter, you want to say a word on this, your election system, we are going to see hundreds of millions of dollars coming in. You're going to see it on your TV sets. Ugly ads coming from the second wealthiest family in America. One family, the Koch brothers, spending hundreds of millions of dollars. We got to stand up. We got to change stuff. We got to talk about public funding of elections. And on that subject, Peter, we talked about this at dinner, say a few words about the differences between the German election system, if you like, and the American system. But bottom line is, stand up, fight back, have a vision of where you want this country to go in the future.
Thank you.
Well, I don't want to convey the image of chest thumping here and self-congratulatory discourses that everything is better in our country. It's not. And I'm aware that we're coming from very, very different traditions. And in our country, we, the role of finance, of money in politics, is smaller, a lot smaller than in this country. Now, I'm not giving grades here, and I'm just describing. We have an election cycle of four years. We vote every four years. That means we don't have that permanent election campaign due to the two-year cycle in the House. And we have also, you know, Germans like to regulate. We always also have a kind of regulation on how much money can go to politicians and to parties, and that's-- But that's the, that's the tradition. And I'm not saying that I want to export that model worldwide, but it's just a fact that we don't have that tradition. And I think most Germans like it that way, that money has a small role in the elections. But of course, I don't pronounce a judgment on this country.
Sure.
I have a specific question about a piece of legislation--
I have a specific question about a piece of legislation in regards to taxes and a living wage. Last summer, Congressman Ro Khanna from Silicon Valley in California introduced the Corporate Responsibility and Taxpayer Protection Act. This is a bill that would make large corporations, not the taxpayer, pay for costs of federal programs that low-wage employers rely on to make ends meet, such as nutrition.[616.91][616.91](LAUGHTER). I'm sorry. I was just trying to be quick.[620.41][620.41](LAUGHTER). I'm so, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Nervous.
Use your words.
Okay.
You're doing a good job.
The Corporate Responsibility and Taxpayer Protection Act is a bill, is a bill that would make large corporations, not the taxpayer, pay for costs of federal programs such as that low-wage employers rely on to make ends meet, such as nutrition, medical, and housing assistance. Low wages end up costing taxpayers $153 billion per year. Why not give corporations an ultimatum, either pay your employees fairly or pick up the tax bill? I think this is a bill...[663.04][663.04](APPLAUSE). So is this something you would support, this piece of?
Of course, of course. I mean, we talked about this. The answer is yes. And here's your point. This is the absurdity. The absurdity is, as an example, you got Walmart, which is owned by the wealthiest family in America, the Walton family. They are the wealthiest family in America. But what your point is about is they pay wages that are so low that many of the Walmart employees are on food stamps or on Medicaid or subsidized housing. So in other words, because the Walton family, the wealthiest family, pays wages so low, you are paying higher taxes and essentially subsidizing them. It is clearly, this is corporate welfare at the, at the worst. So our job is to tell every corporation in this country, pay your workers a living wage. We don't want to subsidize you. Absolutely.[727.11][727.11](APPLAUSE).
Senator Sanders, at the beginning of the night, you said something about internships, specifically that in Germany, they're treated differently than here. Having interned in France, I can't say anything about the German system, though I imagine they're similar. Ambassador, you can elaborate if you want. But my experience in France was that they have very, very stringent rules against exploitation of students by corporations. And they've had these rules since Napoleon. So it's, again, a tradition. But is there any future for that kind of, you know, specifically, they have forced paid internships?
Absolutely.
No unpaid internships?
You know, it's, thank you for asking that. The internships in the Congress, as a matter of fact, and throughout America, what they say is, listen, we're going to give you the opportunity to work for a company or work for a congressperson, and you're going to get good experience, but we're not going to pay you anything. Well, if you're a working-class young person, you can't take that opportunity. You need a paycheck. So your point is well-taken, and I'm happy to tell you that I believe my office is the first office, not only, well, other offices have paid their interns, but we pay them $15 an hour.[815.32][815.32](APPLAUSE). Your point is well-taken.
Good evening, Senator Sanders and Ambassador. My name is Teresa McDonough, and the question I have is kind of more specific to my situation and life story. My husband, in the last year or so, and his brothers are now taking advantage of their eligibility for dual citizenship of Germany, which I think is really awesome. Obviously, him and his mother were not, well, his mother was born there, but she did not grow up there. So a lot of the knowledge of Germany's system is not kind of inherently passed down to us. And me and my husband are actually expecting our first child this summer.[865.63][865.63](APPLAUSE). And unfortunately, me and my husband both grew up in Vermont, and as we're thinking toward the future and her future, you know, we have $150,000 in student loan debt combined. And just the state of our health care system and the state of our government, we want to be able to make, you know, her eligible for citizenship. So my question is, do we have to do anything going forward? Is there anything as far as living there that we would have to kind of plan ahead to make her eligible for health care or for the free tuition that, you know, the citizens of that country get so that we could set her up properly in the future?
Are you, are you talking about your, your future's child?
Yeah, our daughter. She would be eligible for dual citizenship through my husband's family.
I'm not too sure what the path to citizenship is in this particular case, usually. If, if the two parents are German, of course, then the child is German. If only one part is German, the other is American, then I think it depends a little bit on where you live. And there might be a path to citizenship once your child is, is older. I, I just don't know the legal situation in this specific case. But of course, you're eligible to, to live in Germany and to send your child, you know, when the time comes, tuition-free to the university there. And I'm sure if one part of the couple is, has the German nationality, that eventually there is a path to the German citizenship. I just don't know the timelines and the requirements for having to live there a while. I, I can promise you a more precise information if you leave me with your address, and I can email you that.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm over here, Bernie, talking to a woman who works with you at the office. And actually, I confessed, I said, all I really wanted to do is ask a question that would get you up and active in front of the group and, and holding forth in the way that you are. So we thank you. My name is Bob Buchanan. I teach at Goddard College. One of the issues that I haven't seen emerge, that I know a lot of us are thinking about very deeply, is the extraordinary racism and white supremacy that is all over the White House and is deeply insinuating into the Republican Party. I'd love to hear your thoughts about how we can build as a community here in Vermont and across New England and across the country, specifically in regard to the vulnerable status, not merely the DACA people, but of course, the Haitians, the El Salvadorans, the people of color all over that are really facing the racism and the aggression of the Trump administration.
I mean, I think one of the ugliest aspects of the Trump administration is his effort to divide us up. Every president, no matter how conservative they might have been, whether it's Reagan or George W. Bush, understands that a fundamental job of the presidency is to try to bring people together, not to divide them up. And he is very intentionally, for political reasons, appealing to a minority of Americans, to a racist base, trying to divide us up. So I think right now, in that regard, and I would hope people pay attention to this, we are at a monumental moment in terms of 800,000 young people who are in the DACA program right now, who have, in some cases, come to this country at the age of one or two, know no other country. And if we don't get our act together in the Congress, literally within the next couple of weeks, these 800,000 young people, many of whom are working or in school or in the military, they're going to be subjected to deportation. That's where we are right now. So the immediate task, and I've been working really hard on this, is to do everything that we can to pass a Dreamers Act, to stand with these young people, and to stand with people all across this country, whether they're black or whether they're gay, whether they're transgender, people who this administration, for ugly political reasons, are going after. We have got to stand with those people who are under attack.
Thank you.
My name is Claudia Becca. I grew up in Germany in the '70s and '80s. I came to Vermont in the early '90s. I benefited from a lot of the institutions and implementations of the social democracy at that time. I feel like Germany has changed a lot, and the things that you're speaking about today are still true, but they do have, they did change quite a bit over the last 25 years. Germany has become more competitive in the European Union. It has dismantled a lot of the benefits that used to be true for somebody like me, growing up in a different generation. Poverty's on the rise in Germany. My question is, and this links a little bit to the, your initial comment, to the new coalition. I know that the young people in the SPD were really not very fond of the coalition because they wanted to be the opposition. They wanted to be more progressive. They wanted to see more of a commitment to the social democratic values and not move towards the center and not move towards the more neoliberal agendas of the center. My question to you is, as an example that we all look to, you know, from here, from this perspective, as a country that has so much to offer when it comes to social institutions, how committed do you think Germany still is to those true values of social democracy which have been dismantled? Workers' rights, health care, all these things have been whittled away over the course of time. How committed do you think Germany still is? And where do you see the future of the true social democratic values of the country?
I'm not too sure whether I agree with you when you say all those rights have been dismantled. I think the, the welfare benefits have rather been beefed up, and this government has agreed, I mean, that is sort of in the, in the making, has agreed to even be more generous in certain welfare benefits. And that has been, I think, the success of a good negotiation by the social democrats in, in that coalition talks. You're right that there is sort of a left wing of the social democrats that is opposed to, to this coalition with a center-right party. The social democrats have, had to endure the worst defeat in the last elections in their history. So they originally thought they want to go into opposition to reinvigorate themselves, to reemerge as a strong social center-left party. They are now faced with the obligation for sort of the common good to enter into that coalition because there's no alternative here. And that is a split in the party. And that's why this party will have a referendum in a couple of weeks, whether they accept this coalition agreement and whether, in the end, the party will endorse going into the government. Now, that's an open question, but I agree with you, sort of the young socialists, they are more to the left, and they will probably oppose. I think the, the conventional wisdom is right now that the majority of the party will vote in favor of forming that coalition. It is not a, I would say, an ideal configuration, this grand coalition. It would have been, would be a little bit like the Republicans and the Democrats in one government, in one coalition. That's...
That would be fun.
Yeah, that would be fun. So, but we are a more consensual democracy than others. I think the Germans are probably happy with that middle ground that...
I don't think that that is part of why populism is on the rise?
I, I think you're right. I mean, if you do this over a sustained period, Austria had this for, for decades almost, you know, the two major parties forming a coalition. It strengthens the fringes. It should not be a permanent state. But in, now, with this populist party emerging, there is little other alternative right now than the two mainstream parties forming a coalition. But it will elicit some, some opposition, but that's normal in a democracy.
Okay. I see about 20 people online, and we're not going to get to everybody. So I apologize. Could we cut it off at about 1, 2, 3, 4? 1, 2, 3, 4? Okay? So I apologize, but it's getting a little bit late. Okay. Yes.
Hello. This is primarily a question for Ambassador Vitig.
Get closer to the mic there, please.
Okay. Sorry. This is a question primarily for Ambassador Vitig. In the U.S., we heavily emphasize college, and if you don't go to college, we kind of, I don't want to say abandon, but that's basically what we do. In Germany, I know you guys have apprenticeships and trade schools, and I would just like to know a bit more about how that's an alternative to going to university in Germany.
Yes. That's what we, that we discussed extensively during the day. Thank you for that question. Yeah, we have a very popular and sort of tested system of dual vocational training, or otherwise called the apprenticeship. That's an alternative to college. People, young students, high school students, we have a system where people can leave the high school after ninth grade or 10th grade or after high school graduation. So students of, let's say, 16 years of age can start an apprenticeship. This is usually taking two or three years. 70% of the time is spent in a company. They earn money around $1,000 a month, and they're being trained in practical skills in that company. 30% of the time is spent in a vocational school that sort of teaches them other skills like accounting, et cetera. And after two or three years, there is an exam according to very well-set standards in that particular profession. And there, you, you find apprenticeship systems in 330 different occupations or professions with a specific curriculum. So after two or three years, you take an exam, and then you have a certificate as, you know, a trained, and then comes the name of this particular profession. That's a certificate that takes you quite a long way. It's a recognized certificate, a recognized exam, a non-college, but yet socially very well-regarded exam. That is the pathway for most of those apprenticeships into a practical job, a money-making, rather well-paying job. 70% of those apprenticeships, apprentices that have undergone an apprenticeship in a company then stay with a company. So it is for the companies a way to recruit people and create loyalty, and sometimes it's a lifelong loyalty of relationship with that company. It has been a very successful model. It has brought down youth unemployment to a record-low level. We have the lowest youth unemployment in the Western world. And this is also a kind of recipe for the success of our manufacturing industry because it relies largely on those skilled labor. And, and the important thing is that we offer an alternative for young men and women that like to do practical things early in life and like to come into the labor market early in their life. And that's a good alternative to, to, to the college education.
Thank you very much.
My name is Patrick Granum. I just wanted to ask the ambassador about relations between Germany and Turkey. You already have what in the Islamic world is seen as a moderate Islamic population for a very long time. But relationships between Germany and Turkey have been strained a lot in the last few years. And the second question, just very quickly, was Germany seems to be able to more quickly set up new political parties to take these tensions. And here in America, we, we don't seem to be able to do that. I'd love, Bernie, for you to talk about the possibility of a third party. And what, why, what would stop you from setting up a third party?
On Turkey, great question. We are in a very difficult phase of our relationship to Turkey. Turkey is moving towards a more Islamist society under the leadership of President Erdogan. We have about 3 million Turkish, or citizens or residents with Turkish heritage. Sort of, it's a strong minority of Turks that became Germans or are residents. So we have stakes in that relationship with Turkey. It's a NATO member. It's a very important NATO member. It's sort of the linchpin to the Middle East and to the Caucasus. the Middle East and to the Caucasus, very close to Russia. We want to be careful in, on the one hand, not to lose our bonds. We had accession negotiations with Turkey to bring them in to the European Union, that's a far cry for the moment, but we want to maintain the bonds, especially not to discourage the civil society in Turkey. There's a vibrant civil society, including in opposition to Turkey, so we want to keep that tie to the Turkish society and we just hope that Erdogan is not moving Turkey far away from the model of a liberal representative democracy. There is really a danger of authoritarian tendencies in this country. So in a nutshell, a difficult relationship, we're not giving up on Turkey, we try to foster the human bonds, but it requires statecraft really and a lot of prudence in managing this relationship. Now, the third party, we have a third party, we even have six parties in our parliament. This is basically a problem of a presidential system that tends to be binary and where, as I learned, third-party candidates never succeeded, but it...
Well, actually, in this city, they did. That's my fact.
City and state.
I'll just briefly answer it. It's ironic because Erhard's online and Erhard is part of that coalition, served on the city council when I was mayor. You know, there are communities all over this country where, for good reasons, people feel they're satisfied with Republicans and they're satisfied with the Democrats and they're moving in an independent way and that's fine. I happen to believe that at the national level right now, getting back to the points we talked about a moment ago about the fragility of American democracy, I think it is absolutely imperative that we come together, not divide ourselves up and defeat Trump and defeat the right-wing Republicans who now control the United States Congress. So that is my focus of attention right now.
On top of the educational system with matters on immigration, what stance does Germany hold that allows for greater integration through, of immigration for different cultures to be more accepting of the mass influx of new citizens that are coming into Germany? Then my response, or, and then the second question is, what do you think America, what elements are we missing that we can implement that might bring America a little bit more together, making immigrants feel more like American citizens?
Well, I would be hesitant to give any recommendation to America because as a diplomat, I would step on thin ice here because it usually means taking sides and I've got to be very careful with this. But I, you know, what we admire, have always admired with America is that this is a country of immigrants and you somehow managed with an unprecedented sense of attraction and patriotism to integrate those immigrants and this is unique in the world, if you will. You have people from 150 different cultures and languages, even more, and after a while, they all feel like true die-hard Americans and so there must be a magic trick here, how this country, at least in the past, elicited this sense of American patriotism. I think that's a miracle, but you did it and this is the American exception. And we try to learn from this. What you did, and I think the recipe for us is to have a culture of acceptance of immigrants and you have to have an open heart and open mind. Of course, that's easier said than done, but it's a mindset issue, also in our case and we've got to work on that because, as I said before, we need immigration, we're an aging society and if we want to sustain our standard of living, we need it. So in this sense, I think we can learn a lot from America.
I agree with what Peter said and I would just add that for me, it becomes a little bit of a personal issue. I guess my father came to this country without a nickel in his pocket, coming from a very, very poor community in Poland and a couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to go there and you just think about, and this is the story of millions and millions of people, it's the story of your parents, coming here, not knowing the language, with no money at all, and becoming Americans. He was the proudest American you would, you ever see and I think the point is, what Peter is saying is to stress the common humanity of all of us. All of us want the good things for our children, whether you're black or you're white or whether you're Latino, whatever you may be, it's pretty much the same thing and I get so upset. You know, when Trump tries to divide us up, some immigrant commits a crime and he just blasts it down, these are the people committing crimes, but you've got some white guy going to Las Vegas and shooting down dozens and dozens of Americans, nothing to say about that. All right, so the point is, we are all human beings and we all have the same needs and we've got to stand up to people who are trying to divide us up for such superficial reasons as the color of our skin or the language that we are speaking. And you've got to open your heart and our job is to bring us together and then, you know, Peter said is right, you know, so many people came to this country, not without struggle, not without struggle. I remember reading, in this city, in the 1920s, it was a big deal when a Catholic got a job at a bank. It's true, that was for Protestants and it was a big deal when a Catholic got a job. And if you think the Italians and the Irish and the Jews and everybody else didn't have to struggle their way. Germans and the Japanese and the Asians, God knows, we have a history of that prejudice. But that's the struggle that we have been fighting for, for hundreds of years and in fact, in the last number of decades, we should be proud of the progress that we have made. This is the least discriminating, discriminatory generation, your generation, in American history. And what bothers me, and what bothers me so much about Trump is that he is trying to take us back where we were 50 years ago and we've got to fight that. Okay, Erhard?
What does Germany do about affordable housing for folks that are low income here in the United States? We have millions of people who can't afford a decent, safe place to live and we have growing homelessness all over the country and I know you've been asked to be an expert on so many different things about Germany, but hopefully you can talk a little bit about what Germany does about affordable housing and homeless, its homeless population.
Thank you, Erhard. Well, affording houseable is key. We have a shortage of apartments and houses and I just read in this coalition government or the next government, there's a new program of encouraging homeowners or prospective homeowners and there's a new program for social housing and a couple of billions are being set aside for that. Yes, that is part of the quality of life and I think it varies in Germany, from city to city, from region to region. There are well-to-do regions where there's no shortage of housing and where the housing is of good quality and then there are regions that are weaker, also structurally weaker, especially in the east still, that is economically less thriving, generally speaking, than the west. Still sort of the gap between east-west resulting from the division of the country. Yes, I can only say that that's also part and parcel of a caring, socially-inspired-minded government, that it sets funds aside for social housing and I hope that is being done.
So my name is Connor Snell and I'm from Vermont. When you were a congressman, I actually got one of the scholarships to study abroad in Germany through AFS, the Congress Bundesrat scholarship. And just with both of you here, I wanted to thank you for that opportunity. It's inspired me to travel and learn new languages and teach abroad and yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. And I just want to add, I agree with what Peter said a few moments ago about the enormous importance of these type of programs that bring Americans abroad and people from Europe or anyplace here into the United States and maybe we can talk about how we can expand some of those programs right here in Vermont.
Hello, my name is Stuart and I have a question about vocational education in Germany for Ambassador Wittig. So I was wondering if you see any disadvantages to putting students on either an academic or vocational track relatively early in their lives and also if Germany does anything to keep the German education system from reinforcing class divisions? That is to say, sort of channeling working-class, people from working-class families into working-class professions and sort of the opposite?
I don't see that danger here, sort of the separation, the continuing separation of classes because college, as I said before, is free and even the allowance for the daily life, sort of the room and board is supported for lower-income families or children of lower-income families. So college education is not class-bound anymore. But what is true is that there are kids, there are families that desire or that value practical skills over academic skills and I think the society is moving in that direction, maybe overvaluing academic skills and depreciating practical industrial skills. So I would say it depends on the student, on the young person where he or she sees the future. And by the way, the apprenticeship system is not, let's say, a fork in the road that decides your future life. You can go on from apprenticeship to college, that's what my daughter did. She did a two-year apprenticeship because she felt she was not ready for university and then went on to the university and after college, she had the edge over competitors because she had done that apprenticeship and knew something about the practical side of life. So I think it's not a either/or, sort of it can be complemented, the one with the other. I don't see a danger here of what you are getting at, sort of that class structure is being sort of petrified for the future. I don't think, there is enough social mobility potential to ward off that danger.
Okay, ma'am?
My name is Erica Brown and my question is, I'm a writer, so communication and dialogue is really important and I want to know your, I guess, like, any words of advice you have for trying to talk to people who kind of shut out your opinions and ideals? Like, my uncle is conservative and I get a lot of, "You're a snowflake and you're just a liberal" and so how do we combat sort of the echo chamber that forms when you surround yourself with people who think like you and how do we reach out to people who might have differing opinions than we do?
That is an excellent question and I wish I could give you a magical answer. The only thing that I would say, which I think is encouraging, is that on many, many areas of concern, there is far more agreement among the American people than the media allows you to believe. Now, in some areas, there are widespread disagreements, gun control, abortion, there are real divisions in American society. But on issues like raising the minimum wage, on issues like rebuilding our infrastructure and creating millions of jobs, on issues like demanding that the wealthy stop paying their fair share of taxes, on issues like making sure that every American is guaranteed healthcare, on all of those issues, pay equity for women and more, on all of those issues. Give me another example, which really shocked me, I wouldn't have expected this. Should we provide legal status to the 800,000-plus Dreamers? Do you know what the American people say? By 80%! 80% Republicans, Democrats, independents. So the starting point is to believe there are areas where there are really strong differences. Go to those areas where there is commonality. Ask your uncle whether he thinks people should be working 40 hours a week and living in dismal poverty because they're making nine bucks an hour. Ask him whether healthcare should be a right of all people or not, whether somebody, we heard a story, one of the first women up here tonight, in desperate shape because she can't afford her prescription drugs. Does he think that's right? Probably not. So start off in those areas where you think there is common interest and common views. Okay, ma'am?
Thank you. Senator Sanders and Ambassador Wittig, as I'm sure you both know, but maybe some people here don't, the Democratic Federation of Northern Syria, also known as Rojava, is an oasis in the war-torn Middle East. It's a place where they've established democratic institutions, some of which can be directly traceable actually to the Vermont town meeting. They have taken in refugees far beyond proportions even that Germany has in Europe. They aspire to gender equality, they try to model ethnic inclusiveness and religious tolerance as a future, as a model for the rest of Syria, as a peaceful solution. Their military forces, the SDF, were the ones that finally defeated ISIS in Raqqa. Now, the westernmost canton of the Democratic Federation is under attack by Turkey, by the second-largest military in NATO. With respect for the tiptoeing around Erdogan, who I believe has gone far from representing liberal values to become an actual Islamist autocrat who suppresses dissent, when will the United States government and when will the German government condemn the brutal invasion of Afrin, which is now hitting the city? Civilians in Afrin City are now under attack by Turkey. Thank you.
Well, you hit certainly a very important, not only political but humanitarian conflict and, you know, in general terms, Syria is the biggest humanitarian tragedy of our times. If you want to use that phrase, the international community has terribly failed to resolve the Syrian war. I think we have to apportion blame on a lot of countries here, including our countries that you named. We were probably not robust enough to intervene, I'm not meaning militarily intervene, but support those forces that were fighting for a free Syria. On the other hand, I would not have a recipe, also in hindsight, to have resolved that ethnic, partially ethnic civil war. I was ambassador to Lebanon, I know the area pretty well. I was ambassador to the United Nations, I sat in the Security Council when the Syrian crisis broke out and we tried our best to find a way of reconciliation before this conflict turned into a deadly ethnic conflict. Afrin, the region that you mentioned, is something that is a powder keg. It potentially pitches the US against Turkey, it's a very dangerous situation. We have appealed to Turkey to moderate its reaction in not hurting the Kurds in northern In the end, I think that's an American-Turkish conflict to resolve where we cannot, we can only play a moderating role, but we cannot force Turkey to do or not to do certain things. But I concede to you, we have, we don't have a recipe... But I concede to you, we don't have a recipe for the Syrian crisis. And we have, in a way, allowed to let this tragedy happen. And it will be with us for the next decades. One effect is that we have this million refugees. That's a corollary of that war.
Good evening. First of all, thank you and welcome to you, Ambassador Wittig. I hope your experience of Vermont is a stellar and sparkling experience. It's a fabulous place. My comment is actually to Senator Sanders. I've been a fierce and vigorous supporter of what you represent for at least a half a decade now. And I'm active with the Progressive Party, and I just really embrace everything. It's not just about you, really. It's, you really represent so many things that are my heart, you know? And I, and so I'm one of those people that is stepping up and getting actively involved. And it really annoys me, because in my sense of reality, I should be calling you President Sanders right now. And that's what's true for me. And the fact is that I don't expect you to speak to campaign considerations or anything like that. I'm not looking to put you on the spot with regards to that sort of dynamic. What's also true, however, is there is so much riding on how we're being marketed to. I mean, it's ridiculous that, you know, we have such a negative opinion about taxes when, you know, we've got this statesman from another country on the planet, you know, where they get it, you know? It's, "We're going to be responsible and pay taxes, you know? But look what we get for it," and that sort of thing. So instead-- Anyway, what do the next few months and years look like to you? And I want to leave you with this challenge, if I may. And I leave this out here with all due respect. If you're not going to run again, are you grooming at least a half a dozen people? Because the fact of the matter is, I can't think of a statesman in this country besides you.
Um--
Thank you.
I am not going to comment on 2020. Because I think, as maybe the ambassador reminded us, in Germany, your elections are three months, four months?
Four months.
Four months, not four years, three years. Right now, I am proud that out of our campaign came an organization called Our Revolution, which is independent of me, but it came out of our campaign. And perhaps right now, or a week ago, or a week to come, they had hundreds of people, mostly young people from every kind of background in Washington, DC. Over 400 people. You know what they were doing? They were training them to run for office. 400 people in Washington, from school board to the United States Congress. So what I have been doing, I'm going to be going, I don't know when, a week, two weeks, to the Midwest, and I'm going to the Southwest to support progressive candidates at every level, to get people involved. I think we are fighting, as we discussed a moment ago. We are at a pivotal moment in American history. And we have got to do and act in a way we have never acted before. I'm glad you're involved. Reach out to people all over this country. We're taking on authoritarianism. We're taking on unbelievable sums of money. We can beat them if we are organized, if we bring our people together, if we don't let Trump divide us up. So you'll have to trust me that I am working as hard as I humanly can to achieve that goal. All right, on that note, let me just-- Let me, let me just, this is, let me thank the ambassador. He's never coming back to Vermont. We have worked him so hard, 9:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night. And I want to thank all of you. Because, you know, what we're doing tonight is coming together to talk about some of the most important issues that face our country, and in fact, the world. And so I appreciate very much your coming out. And, Mr. Ambassador, thank you so much for being with us today.
It was a real pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.